Regarding this, correct?
That is correct. Mr. Spinelli, I mean, I'm going to be working it out with Mr. Hernandez and the Highlands, so we can have Mr. Spinelli here.
I think what we were going to have is Mr. Spinelli come in and talk about what Highland Conformance does and how it's, what the municipality can get from Highlands Conformance, and how the new, how they're going to be handling the new guidance on affordable housing.
I would like to have more of information so I can make a better informed decision. I'd request that possibly we table this until Mr. Spinelli can give us that information so we can all collectively make a good, good decision.
No problem, Mr. Neglia, but you just have to do an official motion to table.
Can I make a motion to table?
So I have a motion to table ordinance 2024 colon 11. Do I have a second on that motion? Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second that, Colette. I, again, I'd like to hear more about how the Highlands can help support us. So I'd ask that we wait till Mr. Spinelli to give us that information.
Okay, we have a second on the motion at this time, so I'm gonna go ahead and go into roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
I'm voting on the motion to table it?
Motion to table until after Mr. Spinelli does the presentation.
No, because it has nothing to do with what Mr. Spinelli's coming here for.
Okay. Then, Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a 3-2 vote. The motion passes. The ordinance will be tabled until further notice. We will go ahead, I will work with Mr. Hernandez to schedule Mr. Spinelli, and then we'll take it from there. Moving along. Public session. I'd like to entertain a motion to-
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
We're gonna do the presentation.
Thank you, Council President. I'm gonna look less than I need. Man, this looks like a death trap here. All right, there you go. I'd like to call up Louis Roman and Emily Fals. So before I read this certificate for civilian service, I just want to give a little brief history of what took place. You guys were there, and you acted and responded fast. A player fell to the ground on a basketball court into a cardiac arrest. Now, his name is Marvin Johnson. I don't know if he's here tonight with us. Come on up, Marvin. Wow, you're a big guy. Must've been hard. 911 was called, but Louis Roman and Emily Fals used AED and performed CPR on Mr. Marvin Johnson. Upon police arrival, the player was conscious and on the ground and transported to the hospital. As you can see, he's here with us today. So what's the name of the team again? The Icy Hots? All right, woo, that's a... But then the team took an initiative to not just, to take CPR classes in just in case something like this happens again. So I'm gonna read these two shit to big, because I want to tell you, as the mayor, the township, that I grew up and I'm very proud that we have individuals that step up. And I know you're very proud, you know? And grateful as well. So, Chief, would you like to come up? They read the same, so I'm just gonna use both your names. But first, before I do that, Emily? Precipiny Troy Hills Police Department rents a civilian service award to Louis Roman and Emily Fals for outstanding act of service by a civilian. On May 20th, 2024, due to his and her quick actions and immediately applying CPR, Mr. Roman assisted in saving, and Ms. Fals assisted in saving the life of a male basketball player who had collapsed on the court. Your initiative and selflessness during the crisis are vital traits and appreciated by the Precipiny Troy Hills community. So thank you guys very much. So Louis, this is for you. I'm gonna have the chief present to you the two civilian award pins. So, and, all right. Well, the good news is, as you know, politics gets a little heated up. I know who my new bodyguard is. But that being said, I'm sure you're very grateful, Mr. Johnson, I mean, and your quick response and... Are you guys teammates? Oh, there you go. You have to revive them. Yeah, I know, I can see that. But I want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart. That means a lot, not just to myself, to the entire community of Precipiny Troy Hills. Your quick response and, you know, coming in need of an individual that needed our help and your help. So thank you. And I don't know if you want to say anything, Mr. Johnson? That's up to you.
Give me the mic.
There's not a whole lot more to add. Me and Louis have spoke several times in the last couple of months, but this is the first time I've seen Emily since. But I just wanted to express to both of you how grateful I am, and I appreciate everything that you've done for me. You literally saved my life that night.
Good evening. You know, one of the things I wanted to add, you know, we're appreciative and ecstatic that Marvin is here with us today. But while taking the courses, it was brought to my attention that, that our city, our town, is short on EMS. A good friend of mine, Jerry Banky, rest in peace, we worked together in the Pasadena Fire Department, and I was there, retired from the fire department as a captain, and we had, we worked together all the time, and his biggest thing was public safety. The police department, the fire department, and EMS, you know, making sure that they have whatever they need to protect us, because they're like an insurance policy for us. We take, you know, like, you have insurance, your own personal insurance, and you hope you never have to collect it, because that means you're not here. We hope that we don't have to use them, but we need to make sure they have all the resources they need, that when we call them, they're there. And it was brought to my attention that EMS, there's times at night that we only have one EMS unit working, which is insane. The thought of hoping that you're the first one, that God forbid there's an emergency at your house, and you're the first one to get called and not the second, because if you're second, I'm assuming they're calling mutual aid and, you know, so you're gonna be waiting a while and hoping that, you know, by the time the police get there and everything like that, so you don't want to be number two. So we really need to do something about it, you know? I know it costs more in taxes or whatever, but you can't put a price on your life or your loved ones. The other thing I also was also talking about is, I used to be a former teacher before the fire department, is when our kids have health classes, maybe they should incorporate CPR training or something, because our kids are babysitting or watching their siblings. And God forbid that if something happens, they at least are able to talk to the 911 dispatchers, they would be able to do the basic minimum to try to help their siblings. So these are little things that, you know, we really need to be aware of, and it's very important for all of us. Public safety is the most important thing that, you know, that we have in our, in our town. Everywhere, really, so. Thank you, though. I really didn't want to.
I mean, off of Louis' end, my children and I can be judged, and talk for their personal generation for training me, and then also my father and my brother. And then, if you have the opportunity, like you said, you guys are very satisfied, it's a flight-to-flight situation, and I'm glad that I decided to do what I've thought. But if you have the opportunity, they can get this while I'm here.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Roman, just so you know, we take public safety very seriously here in the township. We bolstered up our police department over the last two, two and a half years. We won't remove any unemployed police officers, we've got 99 now. We do have our ambulance service. We had to put on paid ambulance, because, as you were saying, no one's really volunteering anymore. It's become very, very difficult for these organizations to function. As Emily has said, your father's been a first responder, your whole family of first responders for many, many, many years here in Precipiny. So I want to thank you, Cole. I've known you for many years, and you do our standing job, district, all the districts, fire districts. And I knew Jerry Banky very well. Jerry was a great guy, you know, he was, he's gone too soon, let's put it that way. So, so thank you, and thank you for your commitment to the township.
If we, well, this takes a minute or two, just in case, anybody that was just here for the presentation, if you guys want to, if you don't want to stay.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public session.
Motion?
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, so the floor is now open to the public. You have five minutes to speak on any matter.
Good evening, Ken Dolsky. I cannot tell you how upset, annoyed, irritated, exasperated I am with you guys over the fact that you just took this ordinance and delayed it for probably months. This ordinance goes through the two-step phase, two-step process. So you've had it for a month, and if you didn't understand what it was, then you should have asked. This is a very simple ordinance. It'll let the town take advantage of the fact that it has the right to change the criteria for enforcing Highland regional regulations. And so what the idea here was to, Mr. Neglia, I'm talking to you, by the way. The idea here was to protect people, especially those in the Putting Stone area, who've had problems with development, that was able to take advantage of the number of units that they were building on a given plot, to avoid the regulations, the Highlands regulations, especially those dealing with steep slopes. So the people in Putting Stone were very, very much in favor of passing this ordinance. And I have worked with you guys now for over a month. Mr. Karifi, you and I have talked numerous times about this. You supported it. You told me how you, you were very happy with this ordinance. And when I spoke to you, I think it was two meetings ago, after it had been passed the first time, I asked you, do you think there's any problems with this going forward? You said, no, I can't see any problem. And so here we are, on the verge of finally giving the Putting Stone people the protection that they've been looking for, and at the 11th hour, you decide, for some reason I cannot fathom practically, that, oh, no, now we can't do it. Now, maybe, you know, there's something involvement with the Highlands Council that has to be taken into account. Judy is 100% right. Mr. Spinelli is not gonna talk about this ordinance. This ordinance has got nothing to do with the subject that he's gonna come talk to you about, and all you've done is basically taken away protection from the Putting Stone people and anybody else in town who has the same problem. I thought we had this all settled. I thought you all understood it. You voted for it four weeks ago. And now, I can't understand how you could possibly say, oh, you know, maybe there's something here I don't understand, so let's stop it, because obviously, there's nothing good in this, and, you know, you might as well just not, I'm just so, forget it. I can't talk. But I am extremely disgusted and annoyed with the actions of this council.
Mr. Dolsky, I'll just say, I didn't say I was against it. All I said was, we're done, you can't, all I said was, I wanted to hear the presentation to get, I, Ms. Hernandez, Mrs. Hernandez just gave me a letter from Mr. Spinelli that said there's going to be a lot of, there's potentially a lot of changes, and it could affect town ordinances, et cetera. I'm not saying I'm against it at all. I'm just saying is, I'd like to hear, I agree, I'd like to hear the presentation before we do that, because if we do that, and then Mr. Spinelli tells us something different, we have to change it again, that wouldn't make sense.
Look, okay, I'm gonna step in here, because I sent this ordinance to people to talk about this in March, after the Putting Stone application at the Board of Adjustment, after they cut down three hundred trees for two driveways on steep slopes and created such devastation there. I sent it in March, okay? So this is August. What we wanted to do is potentially keep another developer or the same developer coming back and doing the same thing by slowing it down. Once the executive director of the Highlands Council, Mr. Spinelli, is coming to talk to us about what they are going to be doing with the affordable housing guidelines that they, we can weigh, that they can weigh in now, and we can too. Will it help us? Will it not help us? And yeah, maybe they will be changing some land use, but we wanted to, ordinances, but what we were hoping to do from the time that application failed at Putting Stone was prevent another one coming forward and wasting a year of people's time and energy to fight for something as, that should never have happened. And so long already let me get started, how this seems kind of political too, because I've been hearing a lot about what was going on at the planning board, with the warehouse and open space that's being taken to use for a turnaround. There's a lot of stuff that's going on between the Highlands and us and the council and as, I know I'm a minority, but I'm gonna keep talking about it, because it's important. It's important for Precipiny. The Tree City, Precipiny, really, because all we do is cut down trees, and we don't care about the environment here. And this is what people like about Precipiny. I'm frustrated too. I don't, I don't ask for much, and it takes me five times to get an answer for many things.
Go ahead, ma'am.
You can speak.
Okay, I, I've come to numerous council meetings. First one started in, I guess it was April, May, missed June, because I was out of town. I'm here for July. I want to know what's going on with the flood wall project. Has the plan's been drawn up? My number one question. Can anybody answer that? Has the plan's been done by the engineering department?
Go, you, ma'am, go ahead and ask all your questions.
Okay, well, you want them all at once? Has the plan's been drawn up? Has it been submitted for bidding? If so, who has the bidding on the project? You said you were gonna start it in late some summer. I think this is late summer. When is it gonna commence? And when are you gonna clear behind the wall all the vegetation? I got pictures. It started three, what, four years ago? This gets ridiculous. Shouldn't be that hard of a project. You gotta wait for somebody to come in and tell you what had to be done, had to be done. Waiting for the engineer department to make up the plans? Has it been done? I don't know.
Council President?
Oh, yeah, are you done? You're done with?
There were all those other questions.
Go ahead.
All right, well, I'll have an update for you tomorrow. I'll have the exact update on where it is, but I'll have a very specific update for you tomorrow morning, if that's okay.
Do you know if it's been put out for bid?
Not yet, not that I, not that I'm aware of.
So obviously, it's not gonna get done this year. Well, come on, let's be honest.
I'm an optimist.
It's gonna take a little time to put it out to bid.
Yeah.
So if it takes a month or two, that's gonna put us into the pool, and then, I mean, are you gonna be able to do the work when it gets cold?
Council President, this can't be a back and forth, so.
Yeah, it's probably easier to-
I apologize, ma'am.
Um, with the vegetation and all of that, it's probably easier to do in the fall. But what I'll do is, I'll have an exact timeline for you tomorrow.
Uh, I have an estimate on clearing behind my wall of $1,000.
Ma'am, I, I'm sorry, I have to stop you. I apologize, because we're going back and forth. If you'd like, you can speak to Mr. Cryin after the meeting, or as he said, he'll reach out to you tomorrow. I do apologize for that. Thank you.
Nick Comyak, Lake Hiawatha. I, I can't believe the same thing. The Highlands Water Protection and Planning Act was originally passed in 2004. You're in the Highlands, you're part of the Highlands. Back in 2010, we had the opportunity to get in, and Inglesino kept us out, or for the wrong reasons. Here's the YouTube made about it. But what does it take to get a Precipiny official to, to do due diligence and study on his own about what the Highlands Conformance is all about? What does it take? Is it gonna take Mr. Spinelli to come here? Are you gonna understand anything he says? But there really is, and what Judy said, which Spinelli's visit has nothing to do with this ordinance. Aren't you familiar with the creative life on the Precipiny, on the Putting Stone Bridge? That was gonna be trashed by a developer with inappropriate development, over-scale development. These developers have been running Precipiny for a long time. What the Highlands Protection Act does, it actually enforces whole rule. It could cause and prevent inappropriate overdevelopment, major development. And I don't understand how you, finally, the time has come. We're built out, we can't do anything, except leave ourselves vulnerable to, to developers. Put it back on the agenda for, for next week. You don't need Spinelli to come, to help you make up your mind. Your mind should be made up already. And I hate to say it, but put shame on you if you, you live in a Highlands community, the act has been around since 2004. We almost got in it until Mr. Inglesino pulled the rug out from under us, and nobody still knows anything about the Highlands. It's pathetic. Pathetic. And I can't help but think, and I'm gonna say it, you get your campaign financing from a lot of these big developers, and I, that might have something to do with it, you know? You never know. You never know. But the same thing, I can't believe, I come here and I figure, hey, something positive's gonna happen, and there's an undermined. But, you know, Mr. Labor, you know, I, I think you're pretty familiar with the, with Highlands. Maybe you should give the class along with Mr. Spinelli.
I think I'll leave it to Mr. Spinelli, but he's an expert.
All right, but some of you should be a little bit of an expert by now. If a guy like me can, can educate myself about it, I'm, I'm sure you can, but very disappointing, very disappointing.
Council President, just as a point of clarification, I believe, and Mr. Labor, if you can verify, the Highlands had asked for us to hold off on this anyway, during this, because they had stuff that they wanted us to, they were incorporating this action in a larger scale action they were gonna ask of communities.
That's correct. As a matter of fact, Mary Jude, Havik Wyler, sent an email to Ed Snikus, our planner, and said, look, we're revising the rules, so we'd rather you waited, and then incorporated that. And that's exactly what she said.
Actually, Mary Jude said if Precipiny would approve all the Highlands land use ordinances, you know that's never gonna happen. You know that. Because we don't do that now.
I'm just gonna read, I've got an ordinance-
That's what Mary Jude said, and Ed was getting in between. It's, this is really a simple thing that shouldn't have gotten so out of hand.
No, no, I'm reading what she wrote. I'm gonna, it says, "The new ordinance will be ready in about a month." Their ordinance, "We would strongly recommend that you wait and adopt the new ordinance, and then you could change the threshold in there. Thanks, Mary Jude." That's her words, not mine.
Good.
We can't, we can't, we can't, we can't, guys, I'm sorry, we can't.
That's fine.
It's a fact.
That's fine, that's great. And we'll do it, we'll do it then. We'll do all the good due diligence for Highlands when it's, when it comes in. Thank you, Mr. Labor. We'll remember this for a month from now.
Ken, I'm sorry.
I'm just stating that she sent the email.
We cannot, we cannot, we cannot.
And we have not-
We can speak to them after the meeting, Ken.
I, I, I commute with Mary Jude as well. She's being bureaucratic, and she's thinking that we're thinking in the right way, but we don't all think in the same way. So we'll see what happens when it comes out. We'll see.
Anyone else from the public?
Bob Vanezzi of Precipiny. My comments during the public portion of the last council meeting were primarily intended for Mayor Barbario. But at the time, the mayor was unable to attend the meeting because of a higher responsibility related to the heartbreaking traffic accident that took the life of an eighteen, of an eight-year-old Precipiny boy that evening. Tonight, I'd like to repeat a summarized version of my comments and listen to the mayor's response. In my opinion, the primary goal of the next mayor's roundtable meeting should be for all mayors in attendance to follow the lead of the mayor of East Hanover and come to an agreement to reject all pilots. On average, a municipality collects about three times the revenue from conventional taxation than it would if the same property were given a pilot. A prime example of this is Stanbury, which pays over $2 million less per year and over $60 million less over thirty, over the 30-year pilot period than it would if it were taxed conventionally. The amount of tax revenue that Precipiny forfeited on Stanbury alone is staggering, but it's only a drop in the bucket when you consider how many more pilots have already been approved or may be approved after Stanbury. An agreement among the mayors not to offer pilots means that a developer would have to build at conventional taxation rates or not build at all. But the threat of not building at all is nowhere near as bad as it sounds. Consider these facts. One, Precipiny would collect as much tax revenue from one conventionally taxed project, and two vacant properties than it would from offering all three properties a pilot. Second, somewhat mind-boggling is the fact that Precipiny would collect more revenue by leaving a, a property vacant for 15 years and then taxing it conventionally for the next 15 years than it would receive from 30 years of pilot payments. And lastly, Precipiny had managed to approve a 2024 budget rate hike of, of just 2.29% despite having 20 major office property vacancies on its books. An agreement not to offer pilots takes away the ability of developers to play one mayor against the other and will save Precipiny hundreds of millions of dollars over 30 years. Is this a type of collusion? Yeah, you bet it is. But municipalities are allowed to collude under shared service agreements to enter into joint contracts in order to obtain savings for the sharing participants. Why can't they collude not to enter a contract such as a pilot in order to maximize tax revenues for members of the group? And let's not forget that municipalities are not legally required to offer pilots to begin with. Given the potentially large amount of savings that a no-pilot agreement would generate, it seems like an idea worth investigating. So, Mayor Barbario, I would like to know if you would be- So, Mayor Barbario, I would like to know if you would be willing to propose, at the next mayor's roundtable meeting, that all mayors in attendance come to an agreement to stop offering pilots. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else from the public, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella.
Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is closed. Consent agenda, be it resolved. All items listed within asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial while the township council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along, approval of minutes. We have, uh, minutes from the agenda meeting of June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and minutes from the regular meeting of June twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Moving along to presentations and reports. Mayor?
Um, I'm gonna, um, first, before I get to my report, I want to answer Mr. Vanezia with regards to, um, he's talking about East Hanover mayor. He also indicated, the mayor, that if he were maybe, if he were the mayor of Parsypony, he might look at pilots differently. Why? Because they're the largest, um, suburban, uh, third-largest suburban, um, corporate center, no, the first large, the, the largest suburban corporate center in the state of New Jersey, and the third-largest corporate center in the state of New Jersey. Um, so with that being said, uh, East Hanover has nowhere the amount of revenues to lose that we would have to lose when it comes to that. I, all the other mayors that, and many mayors that I know in the, in their communities are, are in favor of pilots that work for each township. Uh, and you do say in your opinion, which I appreciate, with regards to that, and you sit here and you say these buildings are gonna just lay vacant or, or make more money. Well, that's not what's happening. What they're doing is, when it stays vacant, they're gonna, they're gonna take their structures down. We had that already with NJM, the Jersey manufacturer. So what happens? Alls you get is land tax. So, and the land tax is nowhere near the revenues that you would get with a, um, pilot program. We're here to create jobs, we're here to keep companies here with regards to, um, you know, economic development. Now, not every, and I've said this many times, not every area is gonna have, meet the criteria for pilots. And, um, so far, I've met with, uh, many developers, and pilots haven't even been mentioned with regards. I don't know if they want them or not. But to sit here and say that, you know, "We're gonna make no revenue, and you're gonna shift the burden," which our tax assessor already told, told, told everybody that the burden's gonna go, and, and Matt McGrath, our council member, is gonna go from sixty, forty to seventy, thirty. Uh, so, you know, I, I do appreciate you saying it's your opinion. So I'm, I'm gonna get to my report now. It's actually, uh, pretty long, so let me, um... "The recent traffic fatality in our community has deeply saddened us all and serves as a critical reminder of the importance of traffic safety for both pedestrians and drivers. We all share the responsibility of ensuring our streets are safe for everyone. For drivers, stay alert..." I'm not gonna read everything into detail. "Obey the speed limits, yield to pedestrians, stay off your cellphones when you're driving. With pedestrians, be visible, use crosswalks, and stay alert." So, what prompted, as you know, uh, we had the, uh, tragedy in the last meeting that I was here, which is very disheartening for me. I was there, and, um, I couldn't keep my composure when I was over there, because it was sad. When I contacted... Gotta go to another glasses. "I contacted Commissioner Steve Shaw, who's the liaison to the county DPW and secretary to the New Jersey Transport, Person, and Planning Authority. We contacted the county engineer vets and the administrator, Dina Leary, to discuss the situation of pedestrian safety in general on county roads. Dina did reach out to our administrator. Their engineering department is waiting on our police investigation or the county investigation to be complete to take a look at the data and be better informed of the unfortunate circumstances that led to the fatality. The county is currently developing a local accident safety plan in conjunction with the NJPPA to address pedestrian safety on all our roads. That plan will be in place, what I was told, by the end of the year. Um, Chris Scales, who's the chief of staff at the New Jersey Department of Transportation, with Commissioner O'Connor, reached out to me to let me know that the department is thinking of our community involving the young eight-year-old boy and are prepared to do what they can to support our town. We look forward to, to ensure that this doesn't happen again. So we're gonna set up a meeting between the state and the county, um, and my administration, to find, um, safety measures, and also with our police department and our engineering department. I wanted to, uh, Chief, I wanna let you know that a lot of the residents have reached out to me. Uh, actually, in front of Council Vice President Frank Neglia, at a, um, women's club, Tricky Tray, thanking for the increased police patrol up in Lake Parsypony, um, especially on Kingston Road, um, and other roads here in town. And they were very, very appreciative. And we're going to, um, we're going to beat it up even more, and I'm gonna say this. If you're speeding, you're gonna get a ticket. If you're texting, you're gonna get a ticket. That's what's gonna happen here in the township. It's been happening even before the tragedy, but that's a fact. Signs can only do so much. The only thing that really works is enforcement. And we're gonna get a lot of complaints, because a lot of neighbors are gonna get tickets. But we can't tolerate any, any speeding on local roads, and any roads. I know there's been a lot of discussion with the cannabis. That ordinance will be on shortly. I don't feel comfortable with it right now. Um, and I'm, I'm getting there, I'll be totally candid. I'm, I don't want our town to become the mega-center of dispensaries. I'm in favor of doing dispensaries, but I wanna get it right. I wanna get it right not just for myself, I wanna get it right for the council, and I wanna get it right for the residents as well. So I'm, but I'm, I'm not gonna promise, but I believe it will be ready for the first meeting in, um, August. I have meetings set up with our planner. "On Thursday, July eighteenth, it was actually a really nice day here in Parsypony. I welcomed a group of students visiting from China to Town Hall. A group of eleven high school-age students toured municipal buildings, spending time with Dan Casse, our property tax assessor, Len Ho, Parsypony's chief financial officer, and Charles Flener, Parsypony's building inspector, before joining me and the council chambers to discuss municipal government. Former council president Mike DePere was present, council vice president Frank Neglia was present, and board of ed member Julie Meyer also were there to answer any questions that the, these students asked. And it was really great to welcome this program to Parsypony again, um, after a short break. Now, they started with us in about two thousand twelve, um, and council president Mike DePere at that time was the one whose neighbor brought them here to Town Hall. These students are on the top of their class in China, and fostering and understanding is always a great thing to do. I have to tell you, I'm sure, uh, council vice president did really enjoy the company here, and they were really, I have to tell you, they spoke pretty good English, and, um, it was actually pretty rewarding. Then on Friday, um, July, no, I'm sorry, July nineteenth, I had the honor to attend the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Rauli Pamisani and Mark Sletler of, um, Troop Seventy-Two. Rauli Pamisani and Mark Sletler are the outstanding citizens, and I'm honored and proud of their accomplishments in becoming Eagle Scouts. I presented them, and I say this for a reason. I presented them with an Eagle Scout statue, a Swiss Army knife, and an American flag. And what does an American flag represent? Well, it represents, and what I always ask each brave scout, it's, um, I give this to them in honor of my father, and Gregory Michael Barbario, who was a World War II veteran, and all veterans to do in honor. I asked them to fly it on Memorial Day, on Flag Day, on Fourth of July, and Veterans Day in remembrance of those who sacrificed, were willing to sacrifice and did sacrifice for the lives of this great country. Today, I'm actually proud to say that, after many, many, many weeks and weeks and weeks of negotiations with the blue collar supervisors, I mean, blue collar, excuse me, uh, we signed the agreement with the blue collars today. Um, and, um, I'm proud of both sides. And I wanted to say this about our blue collar workers. And we have one in the audience here today. They work very hard for this township. They have a commitment to the township. Each department. But I always specify one, not that I like one better than the other, I just was a controller of one. Um, it's sanitation. And I can tell you this, we have, we have the best sanitation uh, in the county and in the state, because we have members that care for the community, live in the community as well. Um, it's not an easy job. It's probably one of the toughest jobs in the town. Uh, when you think about it, you have a, you have a hopper, or you, you call it that, or a truck. At the end of the day, when you dump it, it can be anywhere from fourteen to nineteen tons. And that means somebody was in the back of that picking that kind of weight up during the whole day. So, I wanna, I wanna take this opportunity to thank all of our DPW workers, all our sanitation, our water department, everything that they do for the community. Not just sanitation, but they also plow our streets. They also take care of us, you know, when it's snowing and storms, when trees go down, everything. So, thank you, and I'm glad that we finally have an agreement. Uh, I look forward to working candidly with all of you, and your, and, and thank you again. So anyway, in closing, on Fridays, we'll continue, this Friday, July twenty-sixth, with our farmer's market, and we have a local band playing, Five Wheel Drive. So if you have time to come out, listen to the band, uh, they're actually very good. And, um, that's it for my report, and I wanna say one more thing. Um, Chief, I want to tell you, I've been getting, like I said before, not just with the speeding and the traffic, but for our community outreach program that we have in the town. Uh, the residents love it. They love the fact that our police are available at any time, so thank you very much.
Mayor, thank you for the update. Just a quick question. Do you know when the Morris County Prosecutor's Office plans to finish their investigation?
That is, I don't know offhand, and I, I, we don't, we don't, you know, they, we don't really intermingle with them or not, because it's pretty much a, you're not supposed to, I'm not supposed to. Now, maybe the chief can, uh, find out, but I, I can't, I can't interfere. In fact, when I was there, I, I had, I could not be around the prosecutor's office while they were doing the crime scene, crime. So we, we will find out when, we hope that they come to a conclusion shortly. So, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you for your explaining everything that happened that, that evening. That was horrible for us to sit here and know that that was going on at the same time. As the liaison with the traffic committee, I was wondering if you needed the traffic committee to be involved with any of these, um, meetings that you're having with the county and moving forward with the police?
What I would like to do, if, once we have these meetings, I would like to have a meeting with the traffic committee to explain to them what we've discussed, um, going forward with our traffic safety here in the township. As you know, um, it's, I, I'm just giving one example. And, and I know that a lot of the residents in town are very upset. You have these young, young, young kids that are very brazen, and they're driving, riding their bicycles and doing wheelies in front of you. And it's just getting to a point where we have to start enforcing, and we are going to. They have these new electric vehicles and bicycles that they just drive around with no helmets on. Um, I got a text message, uh, um, not a, a Facebook, it said someone on two oh two with, on a little motorcycle, young kid with no helmet. And we're gonna start enforcing, we're gonna start to hammer, I mean, we have no choice. Not only are they putting themselves at risk, they're putting those individuals that are driving at risk. And, and I was a kid growing up here in town, and I, I'll tell you this much. I didn't, and I wouldn't, because I'd have to take the, the brunt of what my mother and father would have done. And, you know, there seems to be no fear anymore. Uh, we had a situation in Lake Hiawatha, as you all read, um, this weekend, that, when I read, when I spoke to the chief, I was just stunned, literally stunned. And the only way we're gonna combat this is by enforcement. Um, I, I'm really, I get sick to my stomach now when I see a kid without a helmet riding a bicycle. Um, and we have, we have to really, and, and that's something we have, we have a public safety measure going out from the PD with regards to safe, helmet safety, with regards to, um, these parents being held accountable, because we can't be their parents. It's like, you know, we, you know, I raised my children already, but we can't be parents, we can't be everywhere. But it's up to the parents to step up. And that's gonna be the message that we're gonna send out from our police department and from the administration. You need to take responsibility for your children. They can't be riding around, um, antagonizing drivers. We can't allow that anymore, and we're not going to allow it.
Thank you. We'd like to be involved, if that's okay. Public information, maybe with the schools, too, from the traffic committee. I mean, you tell us, and we'll do it.
Thank you.
Town Council?
The only thing I had to say, and I know we spoke about this earlier, but I was alerted today that there was a homeless person sleeping on the corner of, um, fifty-three and, um, Park, and, uh, you know, made you aware of it. But just, uh, that was pretty crazy to, to see him this morning, that, uh, we had somebody just sleeping on the side of the road. And I sent a picture to, uh, the business administrator and council president.
Anything else from Town Council?
Yes, I had a library committee meeting as liaison, um, on, I think, the other night. And, um, we were talking about, uh, Lake Hiawatha Library, that's where the, uh, meeting was. And, uh, they had mentioned they had a meeting earlier, uh, with the mayor and BA regarding, uh, refurbishment of the building. Uh, I know the, um, the roof is in pretty bad shape, so I was just hoping that can be put on the fast track. I don't, I don't know what the plans are for it, but, um, we can get that done as soon as possible. I think that's a good start, and, you know, hopefully, they can, uh, get the grants that they're looking for to do to refurbishment and, or, you know, whatever else they need to do.
Okay, moving along to Township Attorney.
Uh, no report, Council President.
Business Administrator?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to quickly also thank the, uh, uh, blue collar workers. The, I, one of the items on the agenda that was, uh, put on at the last moment, um, the, um, R twenty twenty-four dash one thirty-three, the Adapting Memorandum of Agreement between the Township of Parsypony Troy Hills and, uh, Parsypony Blue Collar Workers. Uh, we have, I know you have been updated on, uh, negotiations, uh, for a while. Um, we're happy to bring this to fruition to you for, to consider, a final consideration. I'm very grateful for the, uh, workers overall. They, as Mayor said, they do a great job. They work very hard under tough circumstances. They don't have the opportunity to, you know, um, turn up an air conditioner when they're outside or, or turn on the heat when they're, during the winter. They're working outside, dealing in tough conditions, dealing with tough smells, tough noise, all of that. It's not easy work, and it is, uh, very appreciated. Wanna, uh, uh, thank the members of the, uh, um, negotiating team for being professional and for, uh, uh, their leadership, uh, on this issue. There's Patrick Campbell, Craig Sanborn, Richard Herbs, and Mike Smith. They did a, a, a great job advocating for their members, and trying to, uh, uh, give themselves and their coworkers, uh, put them in the best position that they possibly could. You know, the contract's important, because when we offer fair wages, we are a better community for it. Because we're able to, uh, attract more, uh, employees. Many of our blue collar workers, uh, are town residents, like Mayor said. Um, so, the money that they're earning is going back, right back into the local economy. So it's really important to make sure that we're paying, uh, at the very least, a fair wage. And I think this contract goes far, uh, towards, uh, uh, getting us to where it should be. It would be, you know, considered to be, uh, one of the better contracts, uh, that they've experienced, uh, over the last, you know, four or five contracts. But more importantly, the reason for that is, is that, uh, they're, they were at a point where they were not getting as much. tell you that it's not great, it's good. Um, same thing with, uh, uh, the, uh, town's negotiating team, it's not great, but it's good. But the goal is to make sure that we are, you know, addressing issues like safety and salary and total compensation and training, and making sure that we're putting our workers in a position to stay here for long periods of time, so they can continue serving our residents, and, uh, I think this goes a long way towards that. Um, also, uh, I wanted to quickly mention that, uh, the, um, we're going to be doing summer hours for, uh, township employees, uh, this year. There was a delay in deciding, and this is for white collar employees, um, uh, you know, that aren't, uh, uh, covered by any collective bargaining agreement. Um, there was, you know, was slowdown or, or delay in decide, having final decision on this, because we wanted to try to make sure it was, uh, done properly. Now, the goal is to make sure that residents are served and covered during these periods. Um, the white collar employees will not be working any less hours, they'll be working the same amount of hours that they are supposed to work, but they'll be able to, uh, go, uh, home early on a Friday, uh, by working through their lunches, uh, you know, every day during the week. Um, it's a, a, a pretty good opportunity, and anybody who is, who has duties after, uh, three o'clock on a Friday, uh, that are not covered, they have to continue doing the duties. It's not gonna, you know, generate extra overtime or extra comp time or anything like that, it's gonna be the same, uh, uh, hours worked and same, uh, pay for those hours worked. Um, a lot of other towns are doing it, it, I think it's important, it's, uh, uh, an opportunity to, um, allow our, uh, residents who, you know, just think about when you come, and I see people shaking their head, and I understand that, but, uh, nobody's coming here and talking to our residents on a hot streak, nobody's coming in and saying, hey, thanks, we appreciate it. Those are the minority of people. Most people are coming and yelling and screaming at our employees, unfortunately, 'cause our employees are doing a great job overall. You could look at any organization out there, whether it's Google, Apple, the church, anything, you're gonna find good, bad, and indifferent, and here you'll find good, bad, and indifferent. But what I've found is that the good far outweighs the bad and the indifferent, and I appreciate them. That's all I have.
Thank you. I don't have a report, moving along to ordinance's first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four twelve, bond ordinance providing for various acquisitions and improvements for the golf utility of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris Theater in New Jersey appropriating three hundred and seventy-two thousand, therefore en authorizing the issuance of three hundred and seventy-two thousand bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills held on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM prevailing time, or, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, that the municipal building of said township at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr., uh, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-four, colon thirteen, bond ordinance providing for various two thousand twenty-four capital acquisitions and improvements for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris Theater in New Jersey, the township appropriating eight million one hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars, therefore en authorizing the issuance of seven million seven hundred and eighty-four thousand seventy dollars bonds or notes to the township to finance part of the cost thereof. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Troy Hills held on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, that the municipal building in said township at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Moving along to ordinance twenty twenty-four, colon fourteen, an ordinance at the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris Theater in New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter four thirty titled zoning to amend section four thirty dash one fifty-three titled accessory uses to update same. Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills held on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM prevailing time, or soon after, as, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, that the municipal building in said township at which all, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance and a notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Non-consent agenda, R twenty twenty-four dash one thirty-two, authorizing the award of a contract to Knoll Tennis Club LLC for the operation of indoor tennis facility and provisions of tennis director, professional, and related services at the Parsippany Community Center. Motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R twenty twenty-four, one thirty-three, adopting a memorandum of agreement between the township of Parsippany Troy Hills and Parsippany Blue Collar Workers. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, um, approval of the payroll and bills list, CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment. Number one, authorizes payment of the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regular and miscellaneous payroll estimated at one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And number two, payment of bills from voucher list of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four through July seventeenth, which is three million one hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Motion to approve the authorization for payment above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Could I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?